Twenty twenty four meeting of the Mobile County Commission called the meeting to order. I'm going to ask everyone, please stand for the invocation, and I'd like to say that Pastor Melvin Charles Lou from the Stewart Memorial Christian Methodist Episcopal Church was going to be doing the invocation this morning, and he was traveling and got delayed. So I'm going to ask Eric, who works for the county, one of our, one of our own guys here who works, he's the director of facilities, who said he would do the invocation this morning. So thank you, Eric. And then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this great day you have given us. Lord, we are so blessed, so blessed in Mobile County. We have the greatest staff, we have the greatest commission, the greatest citizens in the state of Alabama. Lord, be with us as we proceed with this meeting. Let our decisions, let our endeavors be appealing to your sight. In just name of prayer, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Eric. Reverend, Reverend Linsley. All right. We have no announcements or resolutions at this time. I'm going to ask Deputy Director Kelsey with her new name Sullivan. Do we have any speakers signed up to speak today?
Uh, we do. We have eight speakers signed up this morning. Um, the first one is Mary Van Brunt, the president of Spring Hill College on Agenda item number three.
All right, thank you. And just ask the speakers to remember to state your name and address. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mary Van Brunt, president of Spring Hill College located at four thousand Dolphin Street, Mobile, Alabama, three six six oh eight. The oldest college founded in eighteen thirty. I'll just add that. Um, thank you so much for allowing me to be here to speak for a few minutes and for consideration of our funding request. This funding request will support a building of a new health and science innovation center, about fifty-five, fifty-seven thousand square feet, and it will house our academic programs in nursing, pre-med, health sciences, and our natural sciences. Uh, the expansion is going to allow us to grow these programs, grow our nursing program from forty to a hundred and twenty students, grow our pre-med and health sciences from a hundred and fifty to two hundred students. And what this does is allows us to be part of the solution to the workforce development shortages that we're finding in Mobile County in nursing and the other health sciences. It also allows us to fulfill our mission to educate more students with our academic excellence of the Jesuit education and our values in forming the entire person, mind, body, and spirit. So I want to thank you for that as well. The economic impact study revealed that this new building will bring fifteen point one million in net benefits to the county of Mobile with a payback period of one point two years for this investment of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I also want to say, though, the indirect impact for me is even more enhancing. What it will allow us to do. One, it will allow us to pursue partnership opportunities with other healthcare systems so that we can really maximize the benefit of this new building. It will also give us the ability to raise even more funding for the new building and for Spring Hill College because it shows the support of the county of Mobile and shows the partnership that we are both working towards for this wonderful county. So I want to thank you again for your consideration, and Spring Hill College thanks you as well. Have a great morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Van Brunt, and congratulations on pulling together all the resources to make this program move forward. We're just happy to be a part of it. We, we know how important it is to, to train future healthcare professionals uh, to go out into our community and beyond, and uh, this is a, just another way to be able to do that. So we congratulate you on your efforts here.
Thank you. Before we move on, before we move on, I think Pastor Lou has made it. And if everybody's okay, we'll have a second invocation because I know our local pastors uh, take time out of their busy schedules to be here, and we appreciate you being here, if you don't mind. And if everybody would stand, we're going to do another invocation.
We can't have enough prayer.
Yeah, you can never have enough prayer. Thank you, Pastor Lou.
Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Madam Commissioners, thank you so much. Let us pray together. Our God, thank you for another day and another day's journey. Thank you for your favor. Thank you for your favor. Thank you for your favor. Now, as the business of Mobile County is being conducted, give us a clear mind. Give us one heart, give us one spirit so that we may be able to do what's best for the citizens of this great county. We pray discretion, we pray judgment, we pray sound counsel, and we pray the ultimate consideration of our neighbor as we make this a better place for all of us. No matter what part of the county we live in, we all remember that we are a part of this one body. We thank you for your power, your peace, and your presence. Now have your way and allow your will to be done. We speak it done in the name of peace, unity, and progress, and those who believe that, said, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Lou.
Mr. President, may we take number three out of order?
Yes, would, Eddie, I think we'd like to take number three out of order. Go ahead and.
Thank you all. Item three, approve project agreement among Mobile County, City of Mobile, and Spring Hill College, whereby the county and city each will contribute two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for a three-year period totaling seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. Spring Hill College plans to use the funding toward the construction of a health and science innovation center and to authorize the commission present to sign all necessary documents associated with the project agreement. The seven seven two project notice was advertised in land yap on Wednesday, July twenty-fourth and July thirty-first.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Sullivan.
Um, our next speaker is Cindy Knowlton with Alabama Extension Office.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Cindy Knowlton, county extension coordinator at ten seventy Schillinger Road North, Mobile, three six six zero eight. And I just want to take this quick opportunity again to thank you for your continual support and also invite each of you along with some of your other staff to our county agents' kitchen next week while all of you, I hope, are at the state commissioners' conference in Orange Beach. And so it's a privilege to be part of that group and serving you, and uh, we have a great bunch um, ready to, to be there with you next week. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Tuerk Schillinger, CEO of Altapoint Health on the new mental health model of care.
Great, thank you for having me, and it's not the first time my name has not come out right, but I'm Turk Schillinger with Altapoint Health, and thank you all for having me. And I came today, well, first, let me say thank you for what you've done for Spring Hill College. I'm a graduate, I got my master's degree from there, and anything that we can do in terms of educating our health leadership in this, in this area is going to be help to all of us um, who are in healthcare. So thank you for what you're doing there. Um, also today, I'm here really to give you an update on a few things that's going on with Altapoint Health. You know, one is, you know us as Altapoint Health, and our community mental health center is Altapoint. And we do have a federally qualified health center that's part of Altapoint that provides primary care. And uh, we have six of those, what we call integrated care clinics where we do primary and behavioral health. And, and it may, you may know this, but this is a trend for all of our health centers. Franklin and Mosteller and, and the health department all have integrated care clinics now because that's the best way to treat the whole person. So a little bit about, about Altapoint in that respect. I also came to thank you and give you an update on the funding that we've gotten from um, uh, for the Altapoint Bay Point Hospital. You know, I think you have given us um, some funding to help us build thirty-four beds, and an update on that is, is that we released the bid last week. We were expect to have the um, the nine bidders um, results in two weeks. Um, the actual construction will start in September. It's slated to be finished in June of twenty-six. It's, uh, it's an addition of thirty-four beds for children and adults. And as you know, we've got adult hospital that's in Daphne that takes care of all of the southwest Alabama region. Um, but we don't have anything in Mobile to take care of, of adults, and we've been very full. Um, there's a lot of demand, a lot of the acute care hospitals that had psychiatric units all closed theirs um, across the entire region. So we're the only hospitals um, for mental health patients that are still standing. And so it's very important that we continue to expand in any way we can to meet the needs of people in our community who need that level of acute care. So anyway, I want to thank you for that. That's a little bit of our update. I do want to give you a, you know, and to, and to the people in the audience, an idea about what Altapoint is made up of. We are a community mental health center. We're one of nineteen in the state of Alabama. Um, we have around twenty-one hundred employees, and we basically treat mental health substance abuse um, throughout our three counties areas in the south, Mobile, Baldwin, and Washington, and four counties in the north, Talladega, Cusa Clay, and Randolph Counties. And so, so we're a large community mental health center, um, but most of, all of our business is, it really comes out of the Mobile region and then mostly Mobile and Baldwin. So um, we are also, as I mentioned, a federally qualified health center. Um, we are now running the Department of Family Medicine Practice for the University of South Alabama for their residency department. Um, and so we have a huge primary care clinic that sees both patients for primary care and for behavioral health. Also, we are the Department of Psychiatry for the University of, of uh, South Alabama. We have, right now, we have twenty-four residents that we're training to be psychiatrists. And our, our goal is to train these in, in adult psychiatry, child psychiatry, and addiction psychiatry, and for them to stay in the region, if not in our region in South Alabama, at least in Alabama. And I think we're, we're probably around sixty-five percent of our graduates stay in the area. So we're very happy about that. Um, and we're also able to, to recruit and get the highest quality people. We also have two hospitals. Um, we have the Bay Point Hospital, which was our first hospital that we bought, was the old Charter Hospital for children and adolescents. Uh, it's a hundred and four beds that we take care of kids in, in that facility. And then we have our hospital over in Mo, in Baldwin County in Daphne. It, it holds currently eighty-two patients, and that is all adults. And so we will be adding on to the um, the hundred and four bed hospital in Mobile, thirty-four more beds um, to try to keep up with the needs of what we have. We've also, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we opened up a crisis center. Um, we've seen over four thousand patients in our crisis center so far. Um, and much to our surprise, we're seeing more substance use in, in our crisis center than we knew we were going to have. And so, um, so we are running around forty percent um, of those individuals who have a serious substance use issue, and we call that a comorbid issue with mental health. Many of those patients who have substance use have also co-occurring mental health problem. And our job is to really try to diagnose that, sort that out, get them quickly stabilized and back into treatment um, within the continuum of care, either with Altapoint or with another provider in the region. So um, in regards of the crisis center, I do want to announce that we are opening um, a eight-bed detox unit for all patients regardless of your ability to pay. So we have been working with the State Department of Mental Health after we opened our crisis center to say, this area needs a public detox center, a place where anybody can go regardless of whether they have any means. And as you know, people with substance use problems, a lot of times, don't have that insurance. And so we are opening up those eight beds. It'll be medically assisted detox where we have IVs flowing, and we'll be able to treat people who are a little bit more medically fragile during the detox process. Uh, the department now of mental health wants to create one in central Alabama and north Alabama. And so ours will be opening probably within the month, and we'll be announcing some kind of a, of ribbon cutting on that. So we will be um, opening that, and I think that is, we found that is a huge need in our, in our region. Um, the other thing I just want to mention is we do all the medical education in the area for the behavioral health region. I mean, it's for, it's for nurse practitioners, for physicians, um, for nurses. It's for physician assistants and so forth. So all of those, um, those things are, am I running out of time yet? I'm not sure. I'm good?
No.
One, one, one more big, one more big announcement that I wanted to make is that the, the state of Alabama has applied to become one of uh, ten states uh, this year to become what's called a certified community behavioral health program. And um, eight states have already gotten it. Ten states came on this year. Every two years, ten more states will come on. It's a new way of funding mental health centers. So our mental health center employees will be really gaining um, getting, getting their salaries up to what market rate is. So we'll be raising salaries across the board for all of our clinical care, um, which we hope that that will really recognize the people who've been with us for years, but also help attract more talent to us that will be able to pay a better wage to get them. So this is called, it's a cost-based reimbursement model. So um, and what it means is if we can pay these people more, um, we'll be able to, um, be able to keep them and retain them. But also, this model has other things it has to have. It has to have what's called a care coordination component to take care of the entire person. So we'll be hiring right now, as I mentioned, we have about twenty-one hundred employees. We'll be hiring over, over the next year and two months, another four hundred employees. So Altapoint will be moving up close to twenty-five hundred employees. And uh, and, and the, the main initiative of this certified community behavioral health system is to be able to create, create care coordination for all forty-four thousand patients that we currently serve. Okay, so a little bit of an announcement, it's, it's hard to kind of grasp what that really means except for the fact that, that um, the federal government and state governments are recognizing that a person with mental health ca, uh, problems has all kinds of social determinant needs that they, that they need, whether it's housing, whether it's healthcare, whether it's dental. It doesn't matter. Um, maybe it's job creation. This new model will help Altapoint um, manage the care of those forty-four thousand patients. And, but thank you for having me. I hope I didn't go too long. I appreciate it, and thank you all for your, for your patience.
Turk, thank you, and Altapoint also, because we've all had, you, you know, you're, you're meeting the needs of the people with mental health issues, and what you alluded to earlier also, a lot of those problems bleed into substance abuse, uh, homeless, homelessness in our community, um, and crime. So uh, what you guys do on the front line there, we, we do appreciate what you do in our community and the extended community outside of Mobile, pretty much everywhere in the state. But for your office here locally, you know, the extension of uh, the southwest Alabama, so thank you so much for what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Mobile Azalea Trail Maids. Um, they want to say a thank you to the commission.
Morning.
Hey, good morning. Um, Megan Thompson, um, ten thirty-five Cody Road North. Um, on behalf of the Mobile Azalea Trail Maids, we just wanted um, to come and thank you all for your, the funds that you allocated um, to our organization. Because of that, we were able to have a successful spring trip to represent Mobile in the um, Cherry Blossom Festival in Washington DC, as well as a Meet the Maids event that was very successful um, at Bellegroth Gardens this year. So um, we just have a token of appreciation for each of you, and just wanted to tell you thank you again, and we hope you can, we can work with you all in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We love the Azalea Trail Maids. I do.
We all do.
We all do.
Next is Dixie Abate of Alabama on motorcycle safety.
Good morning. My name's Freddie Wheeler, and I'll have to stand close to this, Cleveland. I want to thank the Commissioners, I, I, as a now a resident of the city of Mobile, I'm always so reminding my wife, we're still county residents. So uh, I appreciate the job that y'all do each and every day and month and year in your office. So uh, I, again, I am Freddie Wheeler. I live at eighty-four oh five Sterling Drive, Mobile, Alabama, and I am the legislative director for Dixie Abate, which is the state's only motorcycle rights organization. Uh, recently became aware that uh, the Alabama Motorcycle Safety Program, which is headquartered in Bonneville, under the Alabama Traffic Safety Center, has lost their range area at AIDT on the causeway. In two thousand and nine, I approached then uh, Community uh, College Counsel, Chancellor Bradley Byrne, and got him to agree to allow us to put a range there. And I worked with the state uh, Motorcycle Safety Program to take and pair those two entities together because at that time, there was no motorcycle safety course available for anybody in southwest Alabama. The closest range currently is in Montgomery. So with us being removed from this range over at AIDT, we effectively have no place to teach people how to ride a motorcycle safely. As a motorcyclist for over since I was fourteen, which was a day or two ago, uh, I can tell you that, that safety training is paramount to rider safety. We have had recently, in the last few months, uh, a bunch of motorcycle deaths, and if you take in, the average median income in Mobile is about fifty thousand dollars for six people, that's three hundred thousand dollars of loss, wages, time, benefits, and not to mention the, the loss to families uh, from loved ones dying. That doesn't have to be so, and the state has pretty much abdicated its responsibility to motorcycle riders as a whole because they don't require skills tests. It's the only state that still doesn't do that. And then with removal of this range in such short notice, now we don't have a place to take and teach those who want to be responsible motorcycle riders a place to do that. So my request is to the uh, county commission, and is also making as a whole to the Mobile County Legislative Delegation, that you start to take and take motorcyclists seriously. We recently had the Buffalo Soldiers in the city of Mobile who bought their convention here and spent money. But if you want to take and continue that type of relationship, then you need to take and uh, do the things that motorcyclists are requesting that you do. At the time, that only request is, is to have range area. We're building a new aquatic center out off Halls Mill Road. I require a two hundred by three hundred feet asphalt area that is free of obstructions, which basically means there can't be any ditches, light poles, any type of obstruction in order for me to hold a course. Course is meant for twelve people, and it's taught by two instructors who generally come from elsewhere in the state. So I'm, I'm looking for uh, right now, a, a temporary spot because I'm working on various areas. One place I've kind of highlighted is Mobile Greyhound Park. There's, there's an area out there that is sufficient in size that I could take and uh, put range out there. But I'm looking at other places. I'm looking for a permanent place to where we don't get booted. I've worked with AIDT over the years, and temporarily, we've been placed out of there before, but we need a permanent place to where we can have ranges that don't get booted. I'm also looking forward to working with my uh, local representative, which is Dr. Mark Shirey, and also with Senator Mar, uh, David Sessions to take and try to solve some problems on the state level. But the immediate concern is to take and try to resolve the issue of no training area in southwest Alabama. And I would like for the uh, Commissioners to reach out to those at the state level and ask them to take and stay this momentary, because there's only like three months left in the training season for motorcycle safety, to stay this uh, abrupt cancellation of range and let them take and finish out their season until November. I think that's a small request, and I'm willing to work with anybody to take and resolve this decision where it saves lives and it's a good thing for the community.
What did you say, two hundred by what?
Two hundred by three hundred. And that's.
Have you approached, just to kind of throw in on an idea, the city of Mobile, the police department? They have motorcycles, and I know they train. Do they have a, do they have a dedicated facility that they use?
I'm, I'm, I'm approaching a lot of people right now. The, you know, like I said, what I would like to have is some uh, some backing from uh, local governments to take and get AIDT to take and stay their mandate to take and let us continue the course over there for the time being. I mean, we're only talking an additional three weekends because the course is taught Saturday and Sunday, and it has to be an area where there's no traffic, and you have to have an area that is substantial. And I looked for, before I took and approached Bradley Byrne, I looked for over twenty years to take and try to find a range area.
Mr. Wheeler, did uh, AIDT give any reason for discontinuing the partnership on that?
I don't know directly because I haven't been able to speak to people upstate as far as all that information, but my understanding is, is there needed it for a lay down area for roofing. I don't know when the roofing was going to start. The last time we were kicked out of there when I was present, we were kicked out of there two months ahead of when the actually needed the area, and then uh, we were out, out an additional six months before we could go back. So those are the kind of issues that, that we face. But uh, like I said, I'm, I'm trying to approach this on a multi, multi-government level from local, which is city of Mobile, and to the state level because I feel like there needs to be a change in laws and ordinance to happen to where you, you don't force the motorcycle safety program out of the, out of the places where they're located. And this is not happening just in Mobile. It happened up at Jacksonville State. There was a range up there that was closed. It happened over in Dothan where a range over there was closed. So there's, it's happening in various pockets around the state, and they, they only have a limited number of uh, places to go, so.
Right. So is your request of the commission that we ask AIDT, if at all possible, to allow you to finish this training year?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the request.
That would be my, my, my first request. My second request is to, to work with Dixie Abate and help us establish uh, this necessary training. We ask, we ask uh, students now in high school to go drive a car. You have to take a skills test before you can get your driver's license. But yet we'll allow somebody that's fourteen, fifteen years old get on a motorcycle with only a, a reading test. So there's, it makes no sense. It makes no sense.
But you've reached out to your legislators about that part of it.
I started that process this morning. I only just found this out last week. So this is, this has only happened within the last week. So I've been working fervently trying to get somebody to recognize the need.
And as Commissioner Dewitt mentioned, I think uh, a, a good starting point would be with the city of Mobile because they do have motorcycles, you know, they do training on motorcycles, and it could be that they would allow some use of their training yard.
But we will, we will certainly also reach out to AIDT and see if there's.
Thank you very much. And uh, one, just to note, I tried to park over the parking garage this morning across the street, and I, they won't accept my credit card, and there's, it just, no signal, no nothing.
Freddie, we're not validating your parking, if that's right.
I didn't park over there, though, and I, I'm not getting another booth.
Did you ride your motorcycle down here?
Again?
Did you ride your motorcycle down here?
No, I bought my truck.
Okay.
It has air conditioning.
Thank you, Freddie, for being here.
Thank you.
Uh, our next speaker is Darrell Goman regarding the Mobile County Aquatic Center.
Good morning, Mr. Goman.
Good morning, Commissioner. How are you?
Uh, how you doing?
Good to be, good to see you guys. Thank you for having us today. We simply want to thank everybody within the sound of my voice for your involvement in making this possible. Thirty years in the making. Thirty years has gone by, and here we stand today. And County Commissioner Hudson, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Randall. You must look good. Thank you so much for all that you've done and will continue to do when we move to phase two. Let's don't forget that, but thank you so much for where we are right now today. But thank you so much for where we are right now today. I have my daughter. It's tough. But here we are.
And she and others like her are the very reasons that we've stuck with this. Thank you for keeping the faith. I know Eric Poole is also here today. He's the president of CMSA. And we've got Nikki Goman and Riley. And Riley was recently, I understand, selected as the swimmer of the year and she broke a 40-year record with, with the, was it the backstroke? The breaststroke, breaststroke at West Mobile.
So she broke, broke a 40-year record that my wife's coach held. His wife held that record for 40 years. And now my daughter's now broken it, so we kind of avoid those folks for a little while, but you know.
And Tyler Kearns is here today. I almost didn't recognize you, Tyler, with the tie on and everything.
Tyler's our head coach. Tyler's our head coach. There's our president, Eric Poole, you'll wave. And then of course Dan Corte.
Of course Danny.
Look, I won't take up, I know you've got to, guys have a busy day, but thank you for seeing this through and for working with us.
Absolutely. It just begins now, you know?
That's right. That's right. And we are so thankful for, you know, these guys to my left, to watch those guys work and to sit across the table from them from time to time and, you know, create some, somewhat of a war room to work out the kinks and the punch out list and the steel and everything else that goes in these swimming pools. And man, we can't thank you guys enough, you know, for seeing this through and for...
It's been a fun process, working with good people. We've got our, our, our county staff, you know, our facilities, engineering, really administration, legal, every finance, every department has been, has been involved in, in bringing this to fruition, bringing us to where we are today. And, and, and I, I can't thank all of you enough. I, I know that sometimes when you're as perfectionist as our people are, it takes a little longer to get it done, but that's okay because you anticipate the problems on the front end and hopefully don't have them later on when it's a lot more costly and time consuming. And, and I can say that they have truly done that. And I could not be more proud to be associated with the, the people that have worked on this, all of you, and, and including our volunteers. And you know, I know that, that you and Tyler particularly have worked very closely with the architects who did the design work. And, and I mean, I know you are all on SpeakDile. I don't think they ever really moved forward on anything that did not include the communication with you and making sure that everything was exactly the way that it needed to be. And you have the expertise to offer the suggestions and the recommendations to make that happen. And that, I, I can't, that, that was just invaluable. I mean, I, I, I can't thank you enough really for, for being a part of it because I think we are going to have the best state of the art facility anywhere in the state, anywhere, maybe even in the country. I don't know, but by the time it's all said and done and, and it's, and you've been a big part of that, so thank you.
So the aim on our, you know, on our behalf is that we prove to you guys and everybody here the economic impact that this will bring from the high school level to the state level to the national level. And the first time we host a southeastern championship in Mobile, then the proof will be in the pudding when, you know, the folks show up and there's not a hotel to be rented in this town.
And thousands, in the thousands. I know, I, they, you send, you and Tyler both have sent me pictures from all of these meets you've been everywhere and, and it's just amazing to me, the thousands of people that, that are there and, and they're bringing their families and, you know, it's just, like you say, the impact is tremendous.
Yep. Thank you guys very much for the time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, also about the Mobile County Aquatic Center is Eric Poole. Thank you, Eric.
You probably could have been a lot better spokesperson for your organization than Darrell.
Thank you, guys.
Our final speaker signed in is Melissa Gates regarding Big Creek Lake.
This is so much nicer than city council meetings.
We, we totally, we totally agree.
Melissa Gates, 1280 Rigby Road, 36608. We just got wind that the city wants to take over Moss. And as a resident that pretty well backs up to Big Creek Lake, it's Big Creek Lake and surrounding areas. So I have been on the phone with Senator Jack Williams, Rusty Glover, several others, trying to figure out what's going on because nobody knows. So we kind of feel like they might be a little sneaky about this. So I had a petition drawn up and in less than 22 hours, I got 341 signatures of people out Tanner Williams Way and a little bit into Sims, including the mayor of Sims who signed the petition. So I know y'all don't have anything to do with this. I'm assuming maybe you didn't know about it because it, we, so I'm just putting it out there that we don't know. We're concerned if the city takes this out, which we know they're going to because we know that, you know, that the board is appointed by the city council and the mayor, so it's going to pass. I know what I've done is not going to stop that. But with the 341, had I had more time, I'm sure I probably could have tripled the numbers on these. There's not one person I spoke to that is in agreement with this because we don't want to be annexed into the city. And we feel like this is the starting of Tanner Williams' community possibly getting annexed into Mobile, City of Mobile. So any thoughts on that? Is there any clarification?
The best of my understanding, and I understand what you're saying, is you don't want to eventually be, but I, I think what's happening right now is which, first of all, Moss is essentially a department of the city. I mean, I know they're not, but they're, they're, their board is appointed by the city council. So I think there's, the best I understand, since you said, nobody knows, I think I do, maybe.
Thank you.
Number one, I think there's a preliminary conversation with the, with the mayor and his staff. I don't think it's written in stone. It may be. But there's no anticipation of taking in any residents that live in the surrounding area. The 9,000 acres that is being considered, all is property that belongs to Moss. And so I think their board, the Moss board is scheduled to meet today.
Well, I'll be there.
To vote on whether they agree with that or not. So if you, if you ended up with a situation where the 9,000 acres is annexed into the city of Mobile, I think it has a lot to do with some zoning and things on, on Moss's property. Any other residents that would be drawn into the city limits would have to be, for example, a subdivision or an individual who owns maybe a major part of property to agree your petition or you would have to petition and agree to go, or it would be put on a ballot to be voted on. They can't just annex you without your agreement. They could not annex Moss if Moss's board didn't agree to it without, without voting.
If I may add, Commissioner, and, and you're right, we found out about it when you did. And of course, immediately picked up the phone, called the city to inquire about what their intentions were, what the map looked like, how it, because we of course want to know, how does it impact the county? How does it impact our residents? And so had a meeting with the chief of staff, Barbara, and saw a preliminary map. I don't think that this wasn't anything that had even been presented to the city council at the time, may have been by now. But our understanding was it included the, the area immediately around Big Creek Lake, the acreage that the commissioner was talking about. And it also included just a small area of residential below what, I guess to the south of the lake. Is that right, Eddie? Was that, is that correct, what I'm saying? Which would require a referendum. So actually Moss, having, owning all of that property can sign in, just, they could sign to become part of the city of Mobile, that, by that method. But I think what they were intending to do is hold this referendum, which would bring that property as well as that small residential. It was just a contiguous, to be contiguous, you know, with the, the Big Creek Lake property. So I think that was what was explained to us. I don't know exactly how many. It was not a large residential area. Eddie, do you recall how many? We didn't get anything in writing. This was just a, a conversation we had. And so that, you know, you know, what the city council plans to do or will do with that, I don't know. But the, we do, the only thing we do know is because Moss has requested it and they, we were told that it was to be able to protect the headwaters of Big Creek Lake because the county can't protect it. We don't have zoning laws like the city of Mobile where they could institute, once it becomes part of the city of Mobile, then zoning becomes applicable to that area. And so that's, it was for protection purposes, is what we were told.
So I'm, I'm understanding too that Sims has some property that surrounds Big Creek Lake that they could possibly have annexed into their city so where they could protect that portion.
Right. As a municipality, they have the home rule, they, they can do that, whereas the county does not. We don't have that authority.
So that seems like that might be a better solution.
But, you know, I can just relate what, what we were told, and that's what we were told. And our attorney, of course, tells us that we, we really, you know, as you already know, you know, we're bystanders here. We really don't have a say in what happens. Once Moss agrees to it and the city council sets, approves a referendum to go forward.
Well, I know I probably won't be listened to at Moss. I mean, who am I? I'm a retired dental hygienist that didn't take a vaccine, that went political, so. But I know my community, Tanner Williams, does not want to be annexed in. And I don't know if they can somehow or another give us a guarantee that they're not coming after us too because my land, one of my neighbor's land backs up to that. And from what I understand, like I said, just dental hygienist, retired dental hygienist, because the land is connected, they possibly can get annexed in. So I'm not in the terms of obviously.
I think it would require a referendum and you guys would, inside of the area that they want, where you guys live, it would require a referendum and you guys would be allowed to vote, just the people who live inside the area would be allowed to vote. I don't think there's any way that they could actually just come in and force you to be in the city without a referendum.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, my petition didn't say we were either for or against it. It just says we need more time to investigate. We have questions and Moss or, or the city, somebody needs to come out to our community and tell us, hey, this is our plan. I mean, my road dead ends in the Big Creek Lake and we live in a county, we like our way of life. We don't want to be infringed upon. We kind of like West government, not in the...
I, I agree. I think communication is the key. Like I said, we didn't even know till we saw it in the news, so definitely communication is the key. And I think, and I surely, I would hope that the city would move forward and provide all the information and answer questions for anybody that, you know, has concerns about what's about to transpire.
Unfortunately, I can't speak tomorrow because, you know, you have to sign up that the week prior and of course...
What about Moss? Are you going to, how, how do they, do they allow you to sign up and speak today?
I don't, see, because I didn't get this information until Friday. I was able to do the petition and then start spreading the word. And, but I'm going to that meeting today, so we shall see if they will let me say anything.
Probably get an agenda item that's on the council agenda that you can, you don't have to sign up the week before. You can sign up the day of.
I know, y'all are awesome. Seriously.
Yeah, we invite everybody to come down the day of and just sign up and speak.
Awesome. Y'all great. Yeah, I may not do city council. No, I'm still going to be on their side.
You'd probably get more information about Moss's intentions today at their meeting, I would imagine.
Yeah, but I can't speak on it until the next following week, but whatever.
You want to see the map, what they're proposing? I think that would be important to, to look at.
Thank y'all. So much for your time. I appreciate every one of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy.
There's no more speakers.
All right. Then we will move on to the agenda.
Item one. Approved minutes of the regular meetings of May 13th, May 28th, and June 10th.
So moved. Second?
Two. Approved list of claims.
So moved. Second?
Three was voted. Four. Approved application for the transfer of an alcohol license from Christine O'Brien-Holland to Mo's Mart for an off-premises retail beer and table wine license for Eddie's Country Stop on Celeste Road.
So moved. Second?
Five. Approved application for the transfer of an alcohol license from Express Mart to Sazree 24 for an off-premises retail beer and table wine license for One Plus Food Mart on Old Pascagoula Road.
So moved. Second?
Six. Approved application for the transfer of an alcohol license from Ya Ya Oil to Amcy 24 for a lounge retail liquor Class II license for Cheers on Old Pascagoula Road.
So moved. Second?
Seven. Approved amending October 10th, 2023 minutes to correct the typewritten transcription, transcription of Economic Development Manager Matthew Barcliff's response to a proposed traffic study at Creel Road to Grand Bay Wilmer Road to include the word "not" to accurately reflect the statement as follows. A requirement for a traffic study would not be unprecedented.
So moved. Second?
Eight. Authorized amendment to the subrecipient agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Southwest Alabama Regarding Community Development Block Grant Funds to provide roof replacement for eligible residential homeowners within the urban county to extend the term of the agreement until December 31st.
So moved. Second?
Nine. Adopt resolution authorizing request to the probate judge to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare as surplus property, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means.
So moved. Second?
Ten was voted at conference. Eleven. Approved appointment of Renee Barron to the Gulf Coast Resource Conservation and Development Council to serve the unexpired term of Brenda Barnes as a member-at-large.
So moved. Second?
Twelve. Approved amending 2024 Capital Improvement Plan to create a new project, Mobile County Aquatic Center, for the project budget amount of $200,000.
So moved. Second?
Thirteen. Approved amending 2024 Capital Improvement Plan to create a new project, Mobile County Aquatic Center, for the project budget amount of $200,000.
So moved. Second?
Fourteen. Award bid to Person's Service Corporation for Mobile County Aquatic Center Phase One for their bid in the total amount of $23,151,607, including the base bid, alternate one and alternate two, to be paid from the following funding sources.
So moved. Second? Thank you, commissioners. Couldn't do it without these two. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Congratulations to you guys as well.
Fifteen. Approved amending 2024 Capital Improvement Plan to create a new project, Africa Hall, Africa Town Hall and Food Bank install emergency generator for the project budget amount of $109,833.
So moved. Second?
Sixteen. Approved assignment to Dell Consulting for Africa Town Hall Food Bank install emergency generator. The work will consist of design, construction documents, the middle review, and project administration associated with the development of a new 60-kilowatt, three-phase, 208-volt natural gas emergency generator for the newly constructed facility in the amount of $4,833.
So moved. Second?
Items 17 and 18 were voted at conference. Nineteen. Approved sponsorship agreement with hand-up charities in the total amount of $2,500 for its charity golf tournament with funds divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Twenty. Approved sponsorship agreement with Miss Mobile or Miss Mobile Bay Organization in the amount of $1,000 from District Two Education Funds for its scholarship competition.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-one. Approved appropriation contract with Marching Cougars Band Booster Club in the amount of $12,500 from District One Education Funds for uniforms, marching symbols, and operational expenses.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-two, approved sponsorship agreement with Providence Foundation in the amount of $1,300 from District Two education funds for its charity golf classic.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-three. Approved contract with TDA Consulting for consulting services in an amount not to exceed $69,117 for planning, coordination, and preparation of the 2025-29 Housing and Urban Development Five-Year Consolidated Plan and One Year 2025 Action Plan for Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Home and Emergency Solutions Grant.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-four, authorized advertising for bids, roof replacements for John Archer Center and Eight Mile Shopping Center.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-five, approved reappointments to serve as members of the Senior Companion Program Advisory Council for a three-year term for the individuals as follows.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-six. Approved appointments to serve as members of the Senior Companion Program Advisory Council for a two-year term for the individuals as follows.
So moved. Second.
Item twenty-seven was removed. Item twenty-eight. Approved change order number two with Rogers and Rullard for Michael Square Revenue Commission restroom expansion and renovation for additional renovation to the restroom, to, to the restroom, increasing the contract by $35,399.10 to be paid from cost center nine. The contract due total amount will be $892,690.90.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-nine, approved consent of the county of Mobile for the city of Mobile to enter into a tax abatement agreement with Greenfield Environmental Multi-State Trust for the granting of certain taxed abatements to the city of Mobile and the county of Mobile's noneducational real property and personal property ad valorem abatement taxes for the project for three years, subject to legal review.
Commissioners, I just wanted to, on the agenda, on Thursday, it was ten years. That was a typo, typo, and the abatements will not be ten, but for three years.
Thank you.
Say that again, Mr. Ross.
On the agenda, Thursday, the abatements, as the agenda read, were for ten years. But it was a mistake made on that. It's actually only for three years. So the corrected language is now on the agenda, second to last sentence. I apologize for the, ten, it should have been three.
So moved. Second.
Thirty. Approved request of the Engineering and Public Works Department to purchase one vehicle from Revenue Commission reappraisal inventory surplus for the fair market value of $19,242.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-one. Approved professional services contract with Blue Arbor for temporary clerical and labor staffing related to disaster response and recovery services associated with operating community shelters to respond to threats or impacts from extreme events and/or federal declared disasters.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-two. Approved contract amendment number thirteen to the Mobile County Park Initiative contract with Moffitt and Nickel dated June 23rd, 2021 to add additional services for the Chickasabod Campground Improvements Project.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-three. Approved request of the Alabama Cooperative Extension System 4H Club to waive all associated arena fees for use of the John Archer Arena by the Long Shot Archery 4H Club and the Raptors Archery 4H Club. For nine days, there will be no cost to or preparation for the county.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-four, approved professional services contract with Allen Engineering and Science to update the Mobile County Solid Waste Management Plan.
So moved. Second.
Five. Approved contract amendment number four with Thompson Engineering for a Mobile County Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan to add Task 3.1, engineering and design of the Dave Patton House.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-six, approved request of presiding judge of the 13th Judicial Circuit for Mobile County to provide an additional annual pay supplement to court reporters of up to $10,000 for three years to recognize experience gained outside of the state system.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-seven, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved. Second.
Thirty-eight. Approved con, approved service order with Unity Fiber for one gigabit per second internet upgrade from 100 megabits per second internet under the current state of Alabama contract in the amount of $1,850 per month for approximately 31 months for the Revenue Commission Office at Michael Square.
So moved. Second.
We'll go back to thirty-six for just a moment. Were we able to, are we looking, did we look at this and see if we were gonna reevaluate the financial obligation at the end of a certain amount of time?
That's why we put the three-year cap on it.
So it's got a three-year cap and then we'll review.
And I did speak to Judge Pipes about that and he was most appreciative of the three years. And said if he needed more money, he committed, he did, he would be back with us.
Thirty-nine. Approved renewal of software subscription agreement with Carisoft Technology Corporation under the current state of Alabama contract in the amount of $117,354 for budgeting and planning with OpenGov for Mobile County Commission.
So moved. Second.
Forty. Approved renewal of software support agreement with Time Clock Plus in the amount of $16,559.51 for hardware support and maintenance for James T. Strickland Youth Cent- Youth Center.
So moved. Second.
Forty-one. Approved renewal of software agreement with Cutting Edge Automotive Solutions in the amount of $1,195 for Texas Off Highway Software Total Renewal for a diagnostic tool used for heavy machinery for the Public Works Department.
So moved. Second.
Forty-two, approved amending subrecipient agreement with MLK Redevelopment Corporation, approved on March 21st, 2024 to change the funding amount to $750,000 to be funded through the Civil Rights and Cultural Heritage District Master Plan project included in the Mobile County Commission American Rescue Plan Act Strategic Spending Plan, pending final legal review.
So moved. Second.
Forty-three, approved renewal of software agreement with Otter AI in the amount of $720 for integration of Zoom meeting recordings for automated, automated transcription for the Mobile County Commission.
So moved. Second.
Forty-four. Approved renewal of service agreement with Knox Pest Control in the amount of $300 for Centicon Annual Monitoring at Strickland Youth Center Annex.
So moved. Second.
Forty-five. Approved renewal of service agreement with Knox Pest Control in the amount of $410 for the annual termite inspection at Mobile Government Plaza.
So moved. Second.
Forty-six, approved rental maintenance agreement with CPC Office Technologies in the amount of $1,100 for three refurbished Sharp copiers for probate judge.
So moved. Second.
Forty-seven, approved 36-month lease agreement with Sharp Electronics Corporation in the amount of $137.53 per month for one Sharp copier for the Public Works Department.
So moved. Second.
Forty-eight, approved request of Mobile County Emergency Management Director to support the application to the Alabama Emergency Management Agency for the Certified Local Emergency Manager Salary Supplement Program for the purpose of receiving surplus program funds for operational expenses and authorize the commission president to sign all documents.
So moved. Second.
Forty-nine, approved application of the SEFCO A partnership for off-premises retail beer and table wine license at their location on Salco Road.
So moved. Second.
Fifty, approved preliminary and final plat of Herrera Estates and preliminary and final plat of Ross Landing.
So moved. Second.
Fifty-one. Award bid to McIlhenny Construction Company for Reva Road Bridge demolition, demolition for their low bid in the amount of $253,283.66.
So moved. Second.
Fifty-two. Approved supplemental agreement number one with HCL Contracting for Project McDavid Road Gray Drain Base and Pave for modification to proposed base material, decreasing the contract in the estimated total amount of $8,784.05.
So moved. Second.
Seven, adopt resolution consenting to the annexation of portions of the public streets as follows and bounded by territories annexed by the city of Sims pursuant to city ordinances.
So moved. Second.
Fifty-four, approved setting speed limits for roads, segments of roads, and subdivision streets as follows.
So moved. Second.
Fifty-three, approved supplemental agreement number one with John G. Walton Construction Company for Blackwell Nursery Road South Resurfacing Restoration and Rehabilitation for the modification of contract pay items, increasing the contract in the total amount of $4,832.05 and increasing the contract time by five working days.
So moved. Second.
Fifty-six, authorized advertising and receiving bids for Project South Access Improvements at New South Lumber Company. This project is a state-funded industrial access project on US 43.
So moved. Second.
Fifty-seven, authorized acquisition and property, of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds from the property owners for the project as follows.
Moved. Second.
Fifty-eight, commission announcements and/or comments.
Commissioner.
Thad Inge here?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to say good morning to you and to just acknowledge all the assistance that you gave me and the city of Citronell last year when we were trying to work that project. We weren't successful, but I think we, we found a winning formula that we can do better the next time. And I'm happy that you were here today to see all the things that we have on the drawing board, like phase two of the swim program of the, of the aquatic center. So hopefully that will give you some idea about how to kind of be in touch with the, all the funding opportunities there are that the county may be able to pursue. And just thank you for that.
For, for those that don't know, Thad works, he is our lobbyist in Washington DC. He works, what is your title? Are you the new vice president now of Vance Scoring? That's right. Yeah, that's right. Thank you for being here.
We like that.
Thank you.
I do. It came to my attention this past weekend that a native son of Mobile, a man named Casey Converse, who was one of, one of the first Olympic swimmers from the, from Mobile, if not the first, I'm not sure, but he, he was one of the first from Mobile to swim in the Olympics. He was in the 1976 Munich Olympics. He, he swam the 400-meter freestyle. I think he placed ninth. And he passed away this, a few days ago with a long battle with cancer. And, and we just, I think we need to pause just for a moment to remember him. He had a very impressive career, not only with, with being a member of the Olympic team in 1976, but he also swam collegiately at the University of Alabama where he set a, a pair of NCAA records in the 1650-yard freestyle, I believe it was. And he became the first man to break the 15-minute barrier in that event. And those of you who are, who understand swimming knows exactly how important that was at the time. He also shattered the American record in the 1,000-yard freestyle. And then after college, he went on to, for a long, to a long coaching career where he was most famously the head coach of the U.S. Air Force Academy and was the winningest coach, was, was named the winningest coach in Air Force history. And that included five women's conference championships. So I know there are some that are actually here today who, who knew Casey and had followed his career. And I just wanted to bring him up. You know, right here at the end of the Olympics, and, and of course, we have another Olympic swimmer who, who did very, very well, bronze and silver medalist, Paige Madden, of course. And, and I know Tyler Co- was Paige's coach for, for, for a number of years. So that just goes to show the level of talent, all the way back to Casey and now Paige. And just imagine here going forward, we're gonna have more Olympic swimmers and Riley may be one of them. So, so anyway, I just, I just wanted to point that out. We certainly want to keep Casey's family and friends in our prayers. And, and just wanted to let you know about his, what he, his contributions to the swimming in this community, even though it was many years ago.
I was given permission this morning to announce Go Mesa funding that will be, the governor will be in Mobile tomorrow along with the Director of Conservation and Natural Resources to announce their Go Mesa awards for Mobile County. And I talked to Commissioner Blankenship this morning. And as you well know, a big project that I've been working on is a boat ramp at the Cedar Point Pier in South Mobile County. And last year I was awarded $4.3 million from Go Mesa for that project. And tomorrow there'll be an announcement of an additional $2.7 million for that project. So that'll be a total of $7 million for Go Mesa for a new boat ramp and parking lot in South Mobile County. With that said, I want to thank Tina and Matthew and Karina, better known as Little Schmitty, and Chance and Andrew. Thank you guys. Tina, particularly you and your entire staff, if anybody I missed. Chance, did I mention Chance? Sorry. From, for making this possible, you guys, we come to you with these potential grants that we want from this Go Mesa and you guys are responsible for getting them in. And of course, we all know that Chris is a, a big advocate for Mobile County. He born and raised in Mobile County, but ultimately the governor has to make those decisions. So I'd like to thank Chris and Governor Ivey for this grant being awarded to Mobile County. So thank you.
Great to meet you.
Thank you.
Item fifty-nine. Approved request for a motion to adjourn until August 26th, 2024.
Second.
We'll stand adjourned until August 26th.
I don't know. I think it's kind of winding down.